Sorry, me and Earl trying to get caught up on our golf stories. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is June 13th. We'd like to welcome you to the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. This meeting's called order at 6:04 PM. At this time, we'd like to ask if you would turn off your electronic devices as it tends to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting's conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their application and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask you to come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium, and please direct all your comments to the board. All right, the first couple items on our agenda, we're going to breeze right through and get them tabled to a future meeting. So let's get started with that. That first item on our agenda is, I'm looking at the wrong minutes, my bad, is Z16-002. It's rezoning from GC to RTD conditional for the construction of 72 townhome units. It's a 7.25 acre tract in landlot 606. This is 4710, 30, 50, 60, 70, and 80, 4780, Camp Highland Road. Prime Interest Incorporated is the applicant. And this request was tabled from the March 14th, 2016, planning and zoning meeting at the request of the applicant to the April 11th meeting. It will be tabled tonight to the July 11th, 2016 meeting at the request of the applicant. Can we get a motion, please? I have a motion, Mr. Monroe, to table. I have a second, Ms. Harrington. All in favor, please vote. Yea, nay, or abstain. And Ms. Harrington, there we go. All right, so it is approved 7-0 and tabled to the July 11th meeting. All right, the next item on our agenda is zoning request Z15-003. This is rezoning of subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes. This is a 1.31 acres at landlot 592. This is 1514 Hawthorne Avenue. Tully and Tully Incorporated is the applicant. This zoning request will be tabled to the July 11th, 2016, planning and zoning board meeting at the request of staff. We need to get a motion to table. A motion, Ms. Lightfoot. A second, Mr. Roberts. All in favor. It is approved 7-0. All right. The next item on our agenda is zoning request Z16-007. This is rezoning from LC and GC to MU conditional for the development of a new restaurant. This is a .142 acres at landlot 452. This is Concord Road and Hollis Street. Smyrna Restaurant Concepts LLC is the applicant. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Seven. It is, it'll be heard tonight, and then you guys will make an action, and it'll move to mayor and council on July 18th. This property is located at the intersection of Concord and Hollis Street on the north side of Concord. It's approximately 1/10 of an acre, and it is currently vacant, and applicant is proposing to build a 3,500 square foot restaurant. The subject property has the current zoning classification of limited commercial and general commercial, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to mixed-use conditional. Our future development map has the property classified as medium-density residential, which is up to six units per acre. As part of this request, we'll be requesting a land use change from medium-density residential to mixed-use. If you all remember about a year and a half ago, the city commissioned Sizemore Group to do a land use study along the Concord Road corridor for all the remnant property that the city had purchased during the Concord Road Improvement Project. And they studied what the plans were to, what type of land uses and plans they could do with this property. During that study, we came up with three concepts. A full development of the area, no development and leave it as a linear park, or a partial development with a linear park. The residents at that time decided to do a partial development with a linear park. And if you look at the plan on the screen, that'll reflect exactly what we thought that would envision. And if you look even closer, if you look at the intersection of Hollis and Concord, you can see on the west side of Hollis Street, there is a parking area and then a small retail restaurant building located on that site that overlooks the linear park. This is the proposed restaurant plan. As you can see, the building, the front door is oriented towards Concord Road, so you'll be entering and off Concord. There's a patio area on the backside of the property, on the backside of the building, as well as a rooftop dining area as well. And I'll show you that in the building elevations. The top elevation is the view you'd see from Concord Road. The bottom elevation is the elevation you'll see from Hollis Street. The top elevation is the view that you will see that overlooks the park, I guess, from the Vickery Hardware side over there. And then the bottom elevation is what backs up to the residence along Dale Avenue. This is the property as it stands today, more or less. I think the city has been working on adding some of the sidewalks and paths through the park. You may be able to see that in some of these pictures. These are the adjacent properties to the northeast, south, and west. With that being said, community development recommends approval of the rezoning from LC and GC to mixed-use conditional with the following conditions. First one, all utilities within the development should be underground. Number two, no debris may be buried on the subject property. Number three, the developer should comply with the city's tree ordinance. Number four, all landscape plans must be paired by a registered landscape architect. Number five, all common areas are to be landscaped and sodded. And then on to our special conditions, the development shall maintain the following setbacks. A front, side, and rear setback is zero. Basically, the footprint of the property is just outside the footprint of the building. So that is why these setbacks are essentially at zero. The next condition, there should be no bells, whistles, or outdoor paging systems permitted onsite in conjunction with the restaurant. The restaurant use shall be permitted to have live music onsite. Next condition, any proposed dumpster shall be surrounded on three sides by brick or stucco with an opaque gate on front. The lid of the dumpster shall be made of rubber. This is to minimize the noise impact of opening and closing that dumpster on the adjoining residence. The next condition, any utility boxes, HVAC components, or accessory components to the commercial building shall be screened from the public right-of-way and adjoining property owners. Next condition, deliveries and trash pickup shall only be permitted between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Next stipulation, the developer shall install a directional sign that directs all trucks to enter and exit via Concord Road. We don't want trucks making a left-hand turn out of the development and going on to Dale The next condition is the commercial building shall have entry doors along Concord Road, which the plan reflects. And the next condition prohibits the following uses. Automotive sales and repair, automobile wash, boarding and breeding kennels, dry cleaning plants, adult novelty stores and adult entertainment, pawn shops, check cashing stores, pool halls and arcades, service stations, coin-operated laundry, composting facilities, funeral homes, group homes, shelter from the homeless, and tattoo parlors. The next condition basically gives approval of the subject property based on the site plan submitted with this zoning application. And finally, the last condition binds the applicant to the elevations reflected in the building elevations submitted with the zoning applications. Any changes to those elevations need approval from the community development director. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions?
Does it have a name yet, Rusty?
I believe it's Wade's Place.
It's Wade's.
Wade's, I'm sorry. Wade's.
Say it again.
Wade's. W-A-D-E.
Ms. Harrington.
Yes, I have a couple of questions about the noise ordinance. I know that we have some provisions already in there, but with the neighborhood so close behind and the fact that they're older homes, which typically don't have good insulation or no insulation, and the windows are inferior, just being sure that the residents will be pleased as the years go by, because we're all happy to have a restaurant in the neighborhood, but how do you plan to maintain the noise levels?
Is that directed at the applicant?
Why don't you address it from your perspective, and then we'll let the applicant speak to that when they get a chance.
Well, the city's starting to address that by planning an evergreen landscape buffer along that property line. In addition, we do have a noise ordinance that requires a certain decibel level at the property line. So if there's an issue, at that time, we'll go out there and measure the decibels, and if there's a violation, then we'll try to bring it into compliance.
Okay, we'll let the applicant address what measures they're going to take.
Really quickly, can you say what the decibel level is that the city has?
It's 65 decibel, and then after, in the evening, it drops down to 60.
60?
Right. And 60 is basically a conversation, is how that's measured. That'd be like a general conversation, like you'd be having.
So they'll be allowed to have at least one table at a time, and, sorry, I couldn't resist, I'm sorry. All right, any other questions for Mr. Martin? No? All right, thank you, Rusty, I appreciate that. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan, your restaurant, and you may have to answer some really stiff questions. Welcome.
I'll do my best. Thank you very much. Thank you all for hearing our case today. My name is Jason McClure. This is my partner, Jack Childress. We are the two sole owners of Wade's. Both of us come from a professional chef background. Both of us have done fine dining for the majority of our career. Between the two of us, we have about 20 years of industry background inside the perimeter in Atlanta, as well as in Charleston, South Carolina. Prior to this, I was the owner of Villains Restaurant in Midtown, and I'm currently still the owner, or currently the owner, of High Five Diner in Midtown. Wade's, so Smyrna has been a market that I have wanted to target for some time, and began looking for an opportunity in 2014. I've been a resident of Smyrna since 2002, I believe. It's getting a little fuzzy at this point, but, and now raising a family here. We're active members of the community. Mr. Childress is a member of the Vinings community and essentially a fellow resident. We won't hold the Vinings against him. But like I said, I've been wanting to target Smyrna for a long time. I really believe in this community, and as you guys know, Smyrna is a complicated mix of limited real estate and certain areas where the visibility is just right for a restaurant. And wanting to do a restaurant that was a hybrid between fine dining and casual, which is what I think this market bears, we have a lot of families, and we have a lot of younger residents. So there's definitely a certain price point that you have to target, and there's definitely an ideal in mind. That being said, I think Smyrna is absolutely ready for better cuisine. I feel like the market asks for it constantly, and that's something that we want to bring. Wade's by design will be targeted to the 30- to 45-year-old demographic with family. When the park became available and when we realized that that was a vision that we could actually achieve, we became very passionate about that, because who doesn't want to be able to have a meal in peace while their kids can play in the park for a little bit? Who doesn't want to be out on a sunny day? Who, after finishing a game at Smyrna Little League, doesn't want to be able to walk across the street and feed their family? I think that it became an opportunity to not only create an amenity for the park, but the park became a direct amenity for the restaurant. I think they have a fantastic synergy. So as you sort of flesh out that demographic that we want to target, we're going to do casual food. We are going to make it family-friendly, but we are, like I said, we both come from a chef-driven, or a fine dining background, and so everything we do will be scratch cooking. I think there's been a nice sort of test case already done with Porchalite for us, where a true chef has come into the market and done both fine dining and casual food, and had a lot of success. And I think when you look at him and you look at Musson Turner's, I think you have a very good idea of the level of quality, the price point, and the idea that we'll be targeting for this restaurant. In addition, I think one thing that Smyrna, the Smyrna City Limits proper don't have is a good cocktail and craft beer program, and that's something that I hear a lot of people also would like. And while we're not trying to push a late-night bar or a wild, you know, saloon by any stretch of the imagination, I think a nice Negroni or a craft beer or a Belgium triple would be very much welcomed in this market. As Mr. Martin stated, we focused heavily on the outdoor portions of this restaurant. We have a thousand-square-foot patio that actually directly feeds into the park, and we have an additional 500-square-foot upstairs patio. And while we won't segregate it by age, the intention is to drive the families downstairs and to drive the older, or, you know, customers without children upstairs, and to sell that a little bit more as a bar, a comfortable, outdoor, you know, bar. The restaurant's actually designed to be split into four, to be conceptualized in four segments with the indoor bar, the indoor dining area, the downstairs patio, and the upstairs patio, so that we can do buyouts, and we can compartmentalize the restaurant so that all four rooms can be, you know, used in different manners if we want to break them up for events, for zoning commission, you know, gatherings. We're really happy with the way the design came out for this. We hired Katrina Evans of E&amp;E Architecture out of Athens. She's done a number of restaurants in the market. She actually, I came to know her, she worked closely with my partner, Alex Brownstein, at my former restaurant, who does Grindhouse Killer Burgers, and they've now got five locations across Atlanta. They've been very successful. But she's done a much softer take on that design, and unfortunately, the renderings there don't do it justice, but the design will be all whitewashed brick with a dark iron window, sorry, like window treatments. Very classical look, very much in keeping with the city's architecture. The red cardinal that you saw on that one picture is actually not red. The cardinal, incidentally, is, Wade is my father, and the cardinal is a reference to my deceased father. We actually believe he comes back and visits us as a cardinal, and so the logo, of course, was self-evident. The cardinal that's on that side wall will actually be just a stencil of the bricks that we won't whitewash in the shape of a cardinal, which we thought was a really fun accent point to the whole look.
Very cool.
That's basically my sales pitch. I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Like to open the floor to questions this time. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, they had asked some questions about the noise before. I know Rusty did a good job of answering, but from your perspective, how are you going to handle live music, that kind of?
Absolutely. So obviously, in the characterization of who we're targeting, we're not going to run rock and roll bands on the back porch. My vision for the occasional live music, which I don't foresee being a frequent item, is, you know, a guy with a guitar, an acoustical guitar, sitting on the porch, you know, very light. We, I do not believe so, no. I mean, I don't want to shut the door on that by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, right now, I'd like to develop the community of the restaurant without putting additional, like, distractions in. And I think sometimes, especially when you're grounding yourself in developing a concept, I feel like becoming a music bar pigeonholes you into, what's the bar that's down in Vinings across from Jubilee that's been there forever? Oh, Vinings Inn. I think you end up pigeon yourself into a place that people only go on Friday and Saturday nights to listen to a live band, and that's not what I'm targeting at all. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to manage ourselves to some degree with crowds at night on Friday and Saturday evenings at 10 o'clock, and just make sure that we're managing everyone's expectations, and we're serving people appropriately, and we're controlling the outcome well in advance of becoming a concern for the residents. Our weekday hours of operations currently, current tension is to be 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Friday and Saturday till midnight.
Any other questions?
Do you have a target opening date?
We're in permitting currently, so obviously, that, we have selected a builder we're prepared to dig. He's ready to put a shovel in the ground once we get through permitting. Current estimate is five months. I'm not buying it. I would love that to be true, but things are going to happen. We are targeting end of November 2016. I firmly believe that we will be open beginning of January 2016.
I think Ms. Warren had another question for you.
Because you are so close to the park, and you mentioned that that was a big factor for you, do you have any plans to support the city in their efforts to, you know, put in the play equipment or keep the park, you know, in a good state or good place? Is that any part of your concept?
That's actually a bit of a complicated relationship, and truthfully, I think to some degree, Tom would need to help me speak to the relationship, but the purchase price of the property has all gone back into the development of the park. And the park is loss-funded, so there's a very specific relationship about how every, everything can be managed. That, you know, that being said, I would have no intention of personally putting in, say, for instance, Playscape, because I don't want to manage the liability for it. But we will obviously have a very direct relationship with that park, and our goal is to not only, you know, to maintain it and to be good neighbors, but to be good hosts, and to utilize that park to develop it as another community venue. And I think in that endeavor, we will be very beneficial, whether we're doing, you know, daytime events, or, I mean, there's so much room, as Zooka and Atkins have already demonstrated, for community events in these open environments. And I think that that's where we're really going to shine, and it will be an opportunity for us, and we do want to be a give-back member of this community. Those events especially will be a real opportunity to be a give-back member. My wife is also connected, she's a speech therapist at Nicket Jack. We're very interconnected with the schools. Our goal is to sponsor, you know, I've already talked with King Springs, I've already talked with Nicket Jack. Our goal is to be very integrated into the educational community in Smyrna, because I believe that, you know, that's going to be so important for where the city goes over the next 20 years.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, guys.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we'd like to open the floor. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, now is your time. All right, let the record show that there is no public comment. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, and this is in Mrs. Warren's ward. We have a motion to approve, if you would.
Motion to approve zoning request Z16-007, rezoning from LC and GC to MU conditional for the development of a new restaurant, landlot 452 at Concord Road and Hollis Street in Smyrna, for the Smyrna Restaurant Concepts LLC.
And that is a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second, Mr. Rice? At this time, please vote. We have, we have an approval, 7-0. Good luck, guys, on your restaurant. Look forward to seeing it flourish, for sure. And forgive us, we have, Ms. Warren's new to our panel, and that, I think that's the first time in my tenure that a brand-new ward member had to open with their own application. Perfect. No worries, no worries. We won't make fun of you long here, but I like the 007 case. That was nice. All right, don't make me gavel, you people. The next item on our agenda is Z16-005. This is approval of a special land use permit for the use of a modular classroom building, 8.83 acres at landlot 595, 596, and 597. This is 3130 Atlanta Road. Covenant Christian School is the applicant. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Yes, this is a request this board has heard numerous times over the last eight years. Basically, hearing this request for every two years since 2008. Covenant Christian School is requesting basically a renewal of their special land use permit to be able to maintain their modular classroom building onsite. This classroom building houses four different classrooms for the school. Originally, our, originally, mayor and council approved this zoning back in 2008. We subsequently reapproved that every two years, because during that original approval, staff required a stipulation that they had to come back and get reapproved every two years. With that being said, I'll give you a picture of what the building looks like today. It looks great. It blends in with the school very well. But staff is recommending approval of the requested classroom building with following condition, and this is the same condition that we've used every year. The module building shall only be allowed for a period of 24 months after that date of approval. After that date of approval, if the applicant shall need the modular building for a longer period of time, the applicant shall reapply for approval for the modular building. This is just to maintain an action, an open discussion with the school. If we identify any issues that we need to be resolved, we can, we can address those issues when this comes back before the mayor and council. You know, some of those issues may be site access. They've changed the way they're dropping kids off. We may need to address that or whatever. Those are types of things that we can address at that point. But as I said before, we are, we are recommending approval with this stipulation.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up to tell us a little bit about the application and the plans going forward. And welcome, good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Brant Sudeth, 3243 Collier Gate Court, Smyrna 30080.
A little close to the property, huh?
Yes. So I, so I look at this property with the eyes of the board chairman, but also as a, as a neighbor. So it's important to me that it also looks right.
Well, welcome. Tell us a little bit about your plans.
So the last time we stood in front of you asking for approval, we had just completed a site plan with an architect for the, for the church and the school. So that was, that was June of '14. Since then, a couple of things have happened, I think, worth, worth noting. We've hired a development director, the school has. We hired her in November of '14. We have, we have also, we still have a, just over $200,000 in our building fund. Part, Phase 1 of the plan the architect created for us was taking the, not the modular, not touching the modular building, but the, the church building and moving church offices with, with school offices such, and classrooms such that we put the church offices now, now sit on the front side of the Atlanta Road, near the Portico, closest to the park. And everything, if you're looking at it from Atlanta Road, on the right side is church offices and, sorry, school offices and school classrooms. Phase 2 would be to remove the modular buildings, build out from kind of the right side of the building, again, if you're looking at it from Atlanta Road, such that extending that two levels back so that we have classrooms back there. And maybe the third phase would be becoming closing the back area such that we had a gym. That's the, one of the big things we're lacking is a gym and a cafeteria. So the exciting news from our standpoint was we've completed Phase 1 of the renovation. And that was, that was at the tune of about $200,000 last year to, to do the move and renovate the space, church and school. Development Director, again, she's been on board now for a little over 18 months. We've raised our annual fund giving from $50,000 last year to $80,000 this year. We repainted the annex as part of the renovations we did in the fall of 2015 to ensure that it mirrored the color scheme of, of the, of the church. Quite honestly, most folks don't realize it's a modular building. We've done, we've done a good job with it over the history with the landscaping and the painting. So we, you know, again, our, our goal is to get to Phase 2 and Phase 3 of, of our, of our long-term process. So capital campaigning will start in the next coming year to start raising additional funds for, for more site work. But we just ask for another two years with, for use of these modular buildings.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Campo.
Last, or two years ago, when you were up here, you were, you mentioned you had, you established an endowment fund and you had had, I don't know, $100,000 or $200,000 in it. And you mentioned that's one of your major projects was to build the endowment. My question is, everything seems to be predicated on dollars raised.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing in increasing these, you know, the endowment fund at this point?
Yes, sir. So, great question. So two years ago, we had about $200,000 in the building fund. We've got $200,000 today. Because anything we, we raised between, within the last 24 months went to the renovations we did last year. But with the development director that we now have on board, we started to build this community of giving. And, and the goal is, you know, I think, and I'm not a development director, but you've got to create a little bit of history of giving before you can go out and ask folks outside, you know, parents and grandparents and church members to give. And so the hope is to show, just continued, the goal for this next year's giving is just over $100,000. So if we show some history of continued growth, then the hope is, is we reach out to folks in the community, corporations, that there's an opportunity to raise more money there so we speed ourselves up along the path.
Any other questions? Is there a magic button number that you guys are waiting on to hit? And do you have an expectation of when that might be, or?
No, I, I tell you, it's been a, it's been, it's been a year of transition there on the corner. SBC, Smyrna Presbyterian, just hired a new pastor. We just, a month ago, hired a new headmaster. So I think both organizations who work real closely together are excited about new leadership. And there's an opportunity, I think, on the corner of, you know, kind of main and main to do, do a lot of exciting things there. But there was a, there was a little bit of a hit of a pause, put things on pause this year, quite honestly, to just get new leadership in place. So the number, I think, for the renovations is, at times, it will depend on, is it building out the school classrooms or is it getting the gym notarium that we all want? Where, it's in the ballpark of $1 million and a half, $2 million to do it the way we want to do it.
Right.
There may be a point where you've got to scale it back and say, do it a different way. But that's the, that's the goal.
All right. Very good. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to open the floor. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, now is your time. Let the record show, there is no public comment. All right. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion. This is Mr. Campo's ward.
Question, Z16005, approval of a special land use permit for the use of modular classroom buildings for the Covenant Christian School. I make a motion to approve the zoning request.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Campo, we have a second. Ms. Harrington? All in favor or opposed? Vote your heart. It is approved, 7-0. All right, thank you very much and good luck with your fundraising efforts. We lost the Braves kid? No, 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 there was a, there was a, we lost him, we bored him.
No, he was a reporter. He was, he interviewed us.
Oh, he interviewed the restaurant guys, gotcha. No, never mind, sorry. That stinks. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a preliminary discussion on the potential text amendments related to the Braves stadium. We have a special guest. Mr. Martin, are you going to say anything first? Or we just want to, oh, Mr. Sudeth, you're going to come and introduce our special guest?
I am. I have asked Dana Johnson, and I want to publicly thank Dana for coming tonight, giving up a part of his evening, to talk about what Cobb County has done with regard to the Braves and the development of SunTrust Park and the Battery and some of the text amendments that they had. Upstairs during our pre-meeting, he gave us a quick history on the mixed use, the tailgating, the peddlers. And I believe we had covered the special event parking. There's three or four other text amendments that are out there. I'd like you, you know, maybe start with the ticket brokers, I guess, is where we left off and finish out that. And then we can just sort of have a general discussion with that. Again, thank you for being here, Dana.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you for, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak. Again, my name is Dana Johnson. I'm the Community Development Director for Cobb County. And I appreciate you allowing me to be here to talk a little about these codes. Before I go into exactly what you're talking about, I think there was one important mention on all of these codes. None of these codes were actually placed in our zoning ordinance either. Most of these codes were placed in our section for permits and licenses with a few in the offenses section of the county ordinance. So just, so that was just, as we were doing research on it, we saw that most of these were more permit and business license-related than, say, zoning-related. Just as a point of thought, as, as you're thinking about these yourselves. To follow up, yes, ticket broker was the next one that we considered. This is commonly known as scalping. But ticket brokers are allowed through the state law. And basically, what we did is we took state law and brought it down into the county ordinance with one exception addition that we added that is different from state law. And that is the location of ticket brokers. We have a requirement here that they be in a building that contains a CO. We did not want to have a situation where we had people on the side of the street with flip tables or tents or whatnot doing ticket brokering in that type of environment. We don't have a problem. It's a legal use here in the state of Georgia. And, but we wanted to make sure it happened within the confines of the building rather than out on the street or something like that. So that's the one change that we did that was different from state law.
Dana, you may want to just throw out exactly what the state law allows with regard to ticket brokers.
Very good. Basically, in the state law, you have a prohibition zone of an area where you cannot do, you cannot do your work as a ticket broker. And the state law says that for a venue which admits more than 15,000 people to a single ticketed event, that the distance is 2,700 feet from the event venue. So that's a little more than a half mile. Outside of that, there are also, there are also provisions for repurchasing of tickets. So let's say I, as a Dana Johnson, go and I get a ticket to a game and I just want to go and resell my ticket because my buddy who's going to come with me wasn't able to make it. Those same distance requirements are there, but I don't have to go through any of the criteria that a licensed broker would need to go through. I could just go to somebody and say, face value ticket, here you go. And, and that transaction can occur anywhere because the state law really deals with the upcharge that happens on a ticket price so that they're not gouging people. One big flaw in the state law, and it's not something we tackled in here because the state has not tackled this yet, is the whole internet stub hub type of business that's happening now, where most of it's happening over the internet and not by people on the street. And that's not something the state law touches. It's also not something that we addressed either. We really tried to stay contained within the confines of what the law allows. There are some things in here about background checks and other items that are contained in the state law. We did not incorporate that into our ordinance since it's already contained in the provisions of state law. And they would need to get their state permit before they came to us to get any county permit. Moving on from there, we also did a, this, this one is actually, the version you have in front of you is an old version of this code. This is for unmanned aerial vehicles, also known as drones. Because the stadium in Smyrna and Marietta are within flight paths of Dobbins Air Reserve Base, we're being very careful that what we're allowing on there is not going to cause flight navigational difficulties for our men and women in uniform. Therefore, we, we have put together a variant draft on this code than what is contained here. And I'll be getting that to Ken shortly so he can be taking a look at that as well. But basically, we want to make sure with the, the new version that we'll be bringing forward shortly is that anyone who is operating a drone is doing so within the guidelines of the FAA. Basically, if you run a drone, you are supposed to have a pilot's license. And as such, follow all of the FAA regulations. It is considered a plane, just like an F-35. So we're just trying to make sure that those drones that are going to be used for these purposes are, meet those particular standards. And we also, within this, have a one-mile buffer, but it's not for flight of a drone, it's for takeoff and landing of the drone. Once a drone is in the air, it is covered by FAA regulations. And there, really, the county cannot supersede FAA regulations as it relates to air navigability. But the FAA is silent as it relates to the takeoff and landing locations of, of these particular devices. And that is where the county has come in and said, with, outside of some exclusions like Lockheed and Dobbins and the Georgia Tech Research Institute and public safety and emergency, emergency medical issues, that we're going to have this one-mile restriction from takeoff and landing of these particular devices. The last code that we considered was a code dealing with solicitation and distribution of materials in public right-of-ways. This is a code that we had to be very careful on because the Supreme Court has made many, many proclamations as it related to solicitation and distribution in public spaces. And the only way that we, through our research, found that it would be legal to do that was to have it contained within an area of safety to make sure that people's safety was being upheld. That's why we added the solicitation and distribution ordinance when an individual walks into a public right-of-way in order to do their solicitation and distribution. That is a clear public safety issue for both the individual themselves as well as for anyone who's in a motor vehicle or, or transit vehicle or, or bicycle on the roadway. So as such, we thought this was a public safety issue that we could address in a, in a legal manner allowed by the courts. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions for your board, sir.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Mr. Monroe?
I just want to ask about transportation. And I think this is probably more for us. But if a downtown restaurant or somebody decides to be a transportation, be hiring or operate their own to and from, has Cobb County addressed any of that for inside Cobb County?
No, sir. And none of that would be addressed by any of the codes that we've addressed. And we would certainly welcome and support growing Smyrna's business community, which is really what that would do is, is help drive business into downtown Smyrna. And we would welcome and support it.
Any other questions? Mr. Sudeth, you want to?
Yeah, just to remind everybody, Dana's covered a lot in a very general fashion. We'll get into the specifics. I will bring these to you one at a time. My goal is to have all of this addressed by the end of the year. But there's not a particular timeframe that we're going to address, you know, peddlers, as an example. Staff will go through this, we'll continue working with Dana. And when we're comfortable that we, one, completely understand it and, two, have, the wording is comfortable to us and we are putting it in the correct ordinance, excuse me, we will bring that to you. So you may have back-to-back meetings with something or you may have two meetings where we don't talk about it and then we talk about it on the third meeting. But we will have these addressed. Again, Cobb has asked us to look at these. Some of their requirements, obviously, you know, and some of the restrictions that they have, obviously, there's property that's still in Cobb County that's a half a mile from the stadium. We'll clarify exactly where that measuring point starts so that we're consistent. But obviously, some of that may come into Smyrna and that's why we're taking a look at it to see if we want to join them with some of, some of those restrictions. I would also, since I handed out an older version, but still, it gives you the intent that if you all have any questions about it, to contact, you know, Joey or Rusty or myself in an email and just say, hey, what about this? Or if you have another thought, even like David's thought, that may not be directly related to this amendment, but it's something you'd like to know, again, let us know by email or give us a phone call on that. And we'll be happy to bring that into the discussion as well. That's all I have on this subject. Again, thank you, Dana, for being here. I'm not going to say I won't call you back and ask for your assistance in the future, but thank you for giving us part of your night tonight.
We're happy to help.
I think Ms. Warren's got one question, guys.
And this wasn't really mentioned, but it made me think of Uber and other traffic or ride-sharing services. I don't know if it's the county or if it's the Braves and the Battery and what they I don't know if it's the county or if it's the Braves and the Battery and what they've decided, is there going to be a specific area of traffic for drop-off and pickups? Or what we used to call taxi stands?
Yeah, that is really covered by the state now. The state has changed their rules for taxicabs and taxicabs and Uber, based upon the state law, are supposed to be on a more even playing field. Actually, since the state has changed their taxicab ordinance, the county has actually totally deregulated taxis in the county because there's no longer really any avenue for us to regulate taxis. So we, we just kind of followed the state's lead and just deregulated it completely. So now it's only regulated by the state.
So you don't require in their development to offer some sort of loading and unloading area for those? Like, so Ubers can be picking up and dropping off all over the area, or?
It'll be different on game day versus non-game days, to make it more confusing.
Everything will be.
Because on non-game days, when the Battery is just a mixed-use development with restaurants and entertainment and things like that, it'll be just like any other downtown area where Uber and taxi can operate freely. During game days, everything will change and there will be very specified points for drop-off and loading for taxicabs as well as buses and trolleys and any other type of device that can bring people from somewhere and bring them there. Yep.
Very good. Well, Mr. Johnson, thank you for taking time out of your.
I'm sorry, I just, I just had a thought.
Mr. Roberts.
Y'all, y'all did a good job pulling it together, but the research material, was there a specific city that you looked at when putting these together, or were there multiple cities or?
We looked all over the place.
All over the place.
And we didn't restrict ourselves just to baseball stadiums. We looked at baseball, football, concert venues, our own state law, how others do it, to try to come up with what we thought was the best package of codes that could help address some of what we think could happen in the future.
All right. Mr. Johnson, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and explain this information to us. Really appreciate that. And we'd also like to take a minute to, I know we mentioned it earlier, welcome Ms. Warren, our new Ward Three representative. And Mr. Sudeth, do you have anything else you'd like to add? We have not done the minutes. I'm, I'm still, I'm still got the gavel over here. I'm just making sure we don't have anything, anything further.
I, I think.
Okay. All right. Without any further business, I'd like to declare this meeting adjourned at 7:56. 6:00. I didn't approve the minutes from the last meeting? I'm losing, I'm losing. I got, I'm sorry. Dear God, someone gavel me. The last item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the May 9, 2016 meeting. Are the board members in possession of the minutes? Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make at this time? No. All right, can we get a vote, a vote to approve the minutes? I move, Mr. Roberts, to approve. Second, Mr. Campo. All in favor, please vote. They are approved 7-0. And without any further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:54. Next time, I'll turn off my mic.